Republic for which it stands, one nation unto God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any's called the order. Commissioner's present, item number four.
I make a motion to recess the commissioner's meeting and open salary board. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, signed by Christian Arnold, to approve item four, recessed commissioners on the salary board, all favor?
Aye.
The board is open and... President, item number three.
I make a motion to approve item number three. Second.
Motion by Christian Arnold, signed by Christian Warren, to approve item three on the agenda for the salary board minutes from the April 27th meeting. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number four.
I make a motion to approve item number four on the agenda?
Second.
Motion by Christian Arnold, signed by Christian Warren, to approve item four on the agenda to create the full-time union position GIS technician administrative assistant. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to approve item number five is listed on our agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, signed by Christian Arnold, to approve item five on the agenda to eliminate the position of the addressing GIS clerk. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Make motion to approve item number six?
Second.
Motion by District Attorney Klein, signed by Christian Warren, to approve item six on the agenda to create the union position of administrative assistant grant coordinator. Questions or comments?
Is that a new position?
It's a new position, but there is another position being eliminated, so the head count's still the same.
So this is involving grants?
Yes.
The coordination of...
Grant writing.
Grant writing?
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Item seven.
Make motion to accept item number seven?
Second.
Motion by District Attorney Klein, signed by Christian Warren, to approve item seven on the agenda, create the union position of office manager. Questions or comments?
Office manager of what?
For the district attorney's office.
My question was just, could motion six and seven actually reflect the district attorney's office?
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item eight?
Motion to accept item number eight?
Second.
Motion by District Attorney Klein, signed by Christian Warren, to approve item eight on the agenda to eliminate both the secretarial positions and the district attorney's office for the district attorney. Questions or comments? Yes.
So does that mean that two secretaries are being eliminated and this office manager is replacing them?
No, these two people are changing job descriptions and titles. So the two secretaries there are being re-titled and their duties are being different.
So they're still being retained?
Right.
And it's different than the office manager?
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept item number nine?
Second.
Motion by District Attorney Klein, signed by Christian Warren, to approve item nine on the agenda, change the starting range for the victim witness quarter of 14 to 10 an hour. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item ten.
I'd like to make a motion to approve number 10 as presented on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Sheriff Benedict, seconded by Christian Warren, to approve item 10 on the agenda to create the full-time real estate clerk position in the sheriff's office. Questions or comments?
Is that new also?
Again, these are just title changes for people.
Title changes?
Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Item eleven?
I'd like to make the motion to approve number 11 as presented on the agenda?
Second.
Motion by Sheriff Benedict, seconded by Christian Warren, to approve item 11 on the agenda to eliminate the real estate clerk. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item twelve.
I'd like to make the motion to approve item number 12 as presented on the agenda?
Second.
Motion by Sheriff Benedict, seconded by Christian Warren, to approve item 12 on the agenda to create the union position of office manager in the sheriff's department. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item thirteen.
Do you want to make a motion to approve item number 13 as presented on the agenda?
Second.
Motion by Sheriff Benedict, seconded by Christian Warren, to approve item 13 on the agenda to eliminate the clerk's sheriff's six-and-a-half hour position. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Item fourteen.
Do you want to make the motion to approve number 14 as presented on the agenda?
Second.
Motion by Sheriff Benedict, signed by Christian Arnold, to approve item 14, create the union position civil criminal clerk in the sheriff's office for the recommendation of Sheriff Klein and Benedict. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item fifteen.
I'd like to make the motion to approve item number 15 on the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Sheriff Benedict, seconded by Christian Warren, to approve item 15 on the agenda to eliminate the position of the clerk in the sheriff's office, eight-hour position. Questions? Yes.
This is kind of a general question. Is this streamlining? Or is this streamlining because there is a big crime drug problem in Carolina?
No, these are departments that we're trying to reorganize to give more flexibility to the department heads and the elected officials as far as work assignments and the ability for them to manage their offices.
Okay.
And unfortunately, a lot of these, these old descriptions were, you know, 10, 20 years old. So we're just trying to get things back in line where they're supposed to be. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried. Item sixteen.
Make a motion to approve item number 16 is listed on the agenda? I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, signed by Christian Arnold, to approve item 16 on the agenda, create the union position maintenance and utility tech crew chief. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Item seventeen.
Make a motion to approve item number seventeen is listed on our agenda? I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, signed by Christian Arnold, to approve item 17 on the agenda, eliminate the position of maintenance effective June 23rd. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried. Item eighteen.
Make a motion to approve item number 18 is listed on our agenda? I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, signed by Christian Arnold, to approve item 18 on the agenda, create the full-time union position Rosen Bridges Maintenance Crew Chief and Safety Coordinator. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried. Item nineteen.
Make a motion to approve item number 19 is listed on our agenda? I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, signed by Christian Arnold, to approve item 19 on the agenda to eliminate the position of Rosen Bridge Maintenance. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried. Item twenty-two.
Item twenty?
Twenty.
I make a motion to approve item number 20 is listed on the agenda? I'll second that.
Motion to approve item 20 on the agenda by Christian Warren, signed by Christian Arnold, to approve the union position of maintenance electrical and high-back technician. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried. Item twenty-one.
I make a motion to approve item number 21 is listed on our agenda? I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, signed by Christian Arnold, to approve item 21 on the agenda to eliminate the position of maintenance electrician for the recommendation of our staff. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried. Item twenty-two.
I make a motion to approve item number 22 is listed on our agenda? I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, signed by Christian Arnold, to approve item 22 on the agenda to eliminate the position of custodian effective June 23rd. And that's, just so everybody knows, that's a vacant position. We're just eliminating a vacant, vacant position.
Okay.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So carried. Any public comment on the salary board?
Can you explain more what the position of the maintenance for roads and bridges? What does this person do? And who they are, can you say?
Yeah. This is a person that maintains the 32 bridges we have in the county and the three dams. So it's probably close to about $100 million in assets that they go out and review, maintain, make sure they stay up to the repairs are done and the maintenance is done on. They also manage about, about $200,000 worth of equipment that the department has. And also has crews with him that he takes out when he does the bridges and stuff. And his name is Sean Isby.
Sean what?
Isby.
Isby?
Yes.
And then how is this different than Penda taking care of the bridges?
Well, Penda has their bridges, we have our bridges. So Penda has all their bridges and the county somehow ended up with 32 bridges.
So the county has 32 bridges and Penda has other bridges? They don't have all the bridges?
No. Any other public comment? Item 23.
Motion to adjourn. I second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, signed by Christian Arnold, to approve item 23 to close the salary board and return the commission meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving back to the commission meeting. Okay, item number five.
I make a motion to approve item number five on the agenda?
I'll second that. Motion to approve item five on the agenda for the minutes of the June 8th meeting. Motion by Christian Arnold, signed by Christian Hall. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried. Item six.
Make a motion to approve item number six is listed on our agenda? I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, signed by Christian Arnold, to approve item six on the agenda to approve the cashes first month electronic payments. Questions or comments?
Are you getting funding now from the state to cover some of these things?
I'm sorry, what?
Are you getting any funding? Are you getting all your funding from the state?
Currently, we are.
You are?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried. Item seven.
I make a motion to approve item number seven is listed on our agenda? I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, signed by Christian Arnold, to approve item seven on the agenda to ratify approved the seminar request. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried. Item eight?
I make a motion to approve item number eight is listed on our agenda? I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, signed by Christian Arnold, to approve item eight on the agenda to ratify approved the hiring of Amanda Smith from Shopin' to the open 911 distraction training position. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried. Item nine?
I make a motion to approve item number nine is listed on our agenda? I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, signed by Christian Arnold, to approve item nine on the agenda to ratify the announced hiring of Michael Rapsody of Brackney to the open part-time position of corrections officer. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried. Item ten?
Make a motion to approve item number 10 is listed on our agenda? I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, signed by Christian Arnold, to approve item 10 on the agenda, announced the hiring of Jordan Harvey Hotbottom to the open union full-time position of civil criminal clerk. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried. Item 11?
Make a motion to approve item number 11 is listed on our agenda? I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, signed by Christian Arnold, to approve the transfer of Carol Ainey from the full-time union position of GIS clerk to the full-time position of GIS technician administrative assistant. Questions or comments?
This might be a simple question, but with all of these job title changes, the salary rates all stay the same?
Salary rates went up due to additional responsibility.
Okay, so they did go up. They all got a little bit of a raise?
Yes.
Okay. And what does she actually do, Carol? When it says addressing GIS, what does she actually do?
Well, she works in the GIS department, does the addressing, also is doing administrative assistant work. Also will be doing the backup for purchasing and other EMA or emergency services.
Addressing of what?
Properties. You got a parcel, has to have an ID number. And it has to have an ID number and it also has to have an address as to where you can get your mail.
But haven't we done that already? Why is she still...
Not every property has that.
Not every property still has that?
Properties get subdivided. Properties that've never had a house on it do not have an address on it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried. Item twelve.
Make a motion to approve item number 12 is listed on our agenda? I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, signed by Christian Arnold, to approve item 12 on the agenda to announce the transfer of Lorraine Depew from the union position secretary in the district attorney's office to the full-time union position administrative assistant grant coordinator. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried. Item thirteen.
Make a motion to approve item number 13 is listed on our agenda? I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, signed by Christian Arnold, to approve item 13 on the agenda to announce the transfer of Kathy Raygard from the full-time union position secretary district attorney to the full-time union position of office manager administrative assistant. Questions or comments? All in favor?
This isn't the DA's office, right?
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried. Item seventeen. Fourteen.
I make a motion to approve item number 14 is listed on our agenda? I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, signed by Christian Arnold, to approve item 14 on the agenda to announce the transfer of Maggie McNamara from the full-time union position deputy chief clerk to the full-time union position of victim witness coordinator. Questions or comments?
So that's a totally different position?
Yes. It's an open position.
It's an open position. Different department and everything. Where is the victim witness coordinator?
In the district attorney's office.
DA's office?
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried. Item fifteen.
I make a motion to approve item number 15 is listed on our agenda? I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, signed by Christian Arnold, to approve item 15 on the agenda to announce the transfer of Celine Herman from the full-time union position real estate clerk to the full-time union position secretary real estate clerk in the sheriff's office. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried. Item sixteen.
I make a motion to approve item number 16 is listed on our agenda? Second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, signed by Christian Arnold, to approve item 16 on the agenda to announce the transfer of Stacy Philson, the full-time union position of clerk, to the union position of office manager administrative assistant, 40 hours per week. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried. Item seventeen.
I'll make a motion to approve item number 17 is listed on our agenda? I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, signed by Christian Arnold, to approve item 17 on the agenda to approve the transfer of Kevin Brewster from the full-time union position of maintenance to the full-time union position of maintenance and utility tech crew chief. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Item 18.
I make a motion to approve item number 18 is listed on our agenda? I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, signed by Christian Arnold, to approve item 18 on the agenda, the transfer of Sean Isby from the full-time union position Roads and Bridges Maintenance to the full-time union position Roads and Bridges Maintenance Crew Chief and County Safety Coordinator. Questions or comments? Yes.
Can you define the role of county safety coordinator?
Yeah. Actually, the sheriff sits on the safety committee. Want to explain a little bit what everybody's on there?
He's responsible for our walk-through of all county buildings, looking for safety, making sure all our fires, the English are up to date. He's responsible for coordination of all the meetings for the minutes, so that everybody on, county employees are on board with updated most recent policies set forth by the county's fire procedure, evacuation, bomb threat.
Could've left the last one. But unfortunately, he's on there.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried. Item nineteen?
I make a motion to approve item number 19 is listed on our agenda? I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, signed by Christian Arnold, to approve item 19 on the agenda for the transfer of Louis Toward from the full-time union position of maintenance electrician to the full-time union position of maintenance electrician and high-back technician. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? So carried. Item twenty.
Make a motion to approve item 20 on our agenda?
I'll second that. Motion by Christian Arnold, signed by Christian Hall, to approve the transfer of our staff from director of public safety chief clerk to director of public safety deputy chief clerk to allow the hiring of a chief clerk effective June 23rd. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Why is he being transferred?
He's going back over to the, his role here began when it was temporary, as if you remember, he was acting chief clerk, then we made him chief clerk, a part of that. He's going back over to work in the public safety direction and to continue to work on personnel and also on the building project. And also to continue to review the 911 center for the upgrades for the new 911 center to do that, to allow us the ability to hire a new chief clerk and continue the structure.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried.
I make a motion to approve item number 21 more than listed on our agenda? I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, signed by Christian Arnold, to approve item 21 on the agenda to appoint following so listed to the county agricultural land preservation board. Questions or comments? Yes.
Is this something new? I haven't heard of this yet. Can you explain what they do?
No, it's been around a long time. Basically, this is a board that sits in farmers that have land that agree not to have their land developed, can get financial support for not having that development. And this is a group, the committee sits and reviews the applications and makes determinations.
So this is the ag program, what we say ag usually for short?
Well, agricultural, yes.
So when they say they agree not to have any of it developed, that means nothing can be developed, no business, no industry on that property?
That's correct.
Because I know of some property where they have a gas well right now, it's in the ag program. Would that be a violation?
That would have to check. I don't believe so. If it's, if it's already been...
I don't believe so. It's just on the surface, you know, commercial properties.
Now, if that was the case, would it be a violation? If there's a gas well being developed on ag property right now in our county, would that be a violation?
I do not believe so.
And, let me get that going. And why wouldn't it be a violation? Again, explain that.
This is a different program, the ag. They sign up for this for life with their farms. It has nothing to do with regular agriculture. It's, if they want to do it, it's all over the state where they sign up.
Right. It's about trying to keep all the land intact. It's about stopping the subdivisions. And the whole goal of this is to stop the subdivisions of the big far lands.
So it's just to stop subdivision, not to stop like development of the property?
Well, they can't. They, in order, if they were going to take and put a commercial operation in and, you know, sell a piece of it off, then it would be a change.
Okay, they're not selling the piece off, it's being leased, so it's being developed. So then that would be okay?
That would be, my understanding is that's okay.
There are properties in preservation for perpetuity. It cannot be...
It cannot be subdivided from what you're saying?
It can't be subdivided.
But it can be developed from what you're saying?
Well, the farmer can do stuff on his land.
He could increase the agricultural development.
Well, is it putting a gas well the same as doing agriculture?
I can't answer that in this town.
Well, it's in Bridgewater Township, and then can we investigate that? Can I talk to you about it? So you can look into it, see if it's a violation?
They just had a review, so I would think that it's not in violation or it would have come up as a review. They review these properties every year.
And who is they?
The conservation district operates the ag preservation program for the county. It's actually a county program.
So if I have a concern, do I present it to the conservation?
Yes.
Committee or to the preservation board here?
To the district manager of the conservation districts, which will bring it to the ag preservation board.
And who's the district manager?
Jim Garner.
Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item 22.
I make a motion to approve item number 22 is listed on our agenda? I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, signed by Christian Arnold, to approve item 22 on the agenda, approve and implement the joint Lackawanna-Suskinda County Office of Drug and Alcohol Programs Community Naloxin Program. Questions or comments?
Can you explain more about the Naloxin program and what that'll involve? Is this just being introduced now into our county?
Well, what it is, is the drug and alcohol program will, will supply, I believe it's the, well, who else is getting this?
Anybody that would actually sign up for it would be law enforcement, all of your emergency services, fire departments, EMS providers, and I believe the general public, if, not the general public.
Not the general public.
Okay, all right.
We'd get this to administer if somebody was having an overdose.
I attended a program in Binghamton that was for the general public for the Nal, however you pronounce it? Nala, how you pronounce it?
Naloxin.
It's not, Naloxin. Program, and it was for the general public, and they taught us how to use the injections, and they gave us kits. So would you consider that as a possibility in our counties? They're doing it over the border in New York. They taught people how to use the program and the kits, and they took the kits home.
Tony, why don't you introduce yourself? You got some...
Yeah, we, right now, we're limiting this to professional organizations. We, there have been concerns raised about liability providing it to the general public. So in terms of our role as, as a government office, we're going to limit it to, to the professionals. And our administration, it's going to be nasal. We're not going to be doing the actual injections.
So nasal works also, and not just the injections?
That's correct.
So it can stop an overdose? Let's say somebody is going into, what is it, respiratory arrest?
That's correct.
And then that would stop the respiratory arrest, just the nasal?
That's correct.
Strong enough?
And, and also will involve training. It's, it's not just providing the medication.
And then what is the liability that you're concerned about? Why you're not letting the public deal with it?
Those concerns have been brought to us. We, we're acknowledging that. We don't have, we didn't have any particular concerns, but we, our job, we don't want to expose either our office or, or the counties to any liability. And we're going to lead that to maybe medical organizations.
Does the DA have any comments on that, what the liabilities might be, why the public's not being included, as Broom County is doing?
Well, we are considerably different than Broom County. We have 840 square miles and 40,000 people. So the challenges we face are considerably different than Broom County or Lackawanna County. We are in the process of developing a countywide plan that would make it suitable for our residents to provide this additional service. So we're in the process of looking at what's the best way to roll it out, to train people. You cannot just say, well, let's just give this to everybody.
Well, they have to be trained. So we went to training programs. And what I'm concerned about is a lot of parents have drug addicted children. And if that child should go into respiratory arrest in their home, or they happen to be there, they could possibly administer something so simple as looks like a nasal spray. they could possibly administer something so simple as looks like a nasal spray. Ours, we were taught the injection, which is much more difficult, I would think. And if you have a nasal spray, you could administer it to your child or somebody you know. And we're so widespread, by the time somebody comes to help us, it's usually too late.
Correct.
So if you would like to consider that, I'm just presenting that as a suggestion.
We're aware of that.
Parents of drug addicted people and you know others who are spouses or partners.
Correct. We want to make sure that, you cannot just, as we've said in the past, you can't just enforce your way out of this. You can't just provide treatment, you can't just provide education. This is just another factor that we have got to look at and implement appropriately for our county. Again, you can't just say, well, let's make this available for everybody.
And it is available to the public. You can go to your doctor and you can get it through the pharmacy.
You could pay for it and get it through the pharmacy and I wonder how expensive it is?
I don't know that.
Adna, you have a question?
Two years later.
All right. Any other questions on this? All in favor? Pose, because you don't pass.
I make a motion.
Item twenty-three.
I make a motion to approve item number twenty-three. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, seconded by Christian Arnold to approve and sign license agreement between Suskinda County and Code Red Next Services. Effective date, Sheldon signed with the Next Master Agreement between Northeast Pennsylvania Regional Counterterrorism Task Force and Code Red Services. There's no cost to the county. Questions or comments?
Can you expand on Code Red Services? Who are they? What do they do?
Well, it's an organization that helps us as far as putting programs together and there's a lengthy report here as to what Code Red does and they work on the, with the Emergency Management and they work on the Regional Terrorism Task Force. And Lance, do you have any additional information?
I don't.
They, we've already got the services in place to another organization, but this organization looks like it'll be offering us better services and the other one's kind of phasing out, so that's one of the reasons for the changes.
Can you give an example of the service?
They work with the Emergency Management Team to make sure we have a plan in place for to be a terrorism event or some type of activity, that we need to have plans in place. And they also work to, well then, they help with the nine-one-one center and calls there if there should be an issue there.
And this is funded by who?
Hmm?
Is this a private organization that provides free professional oversight of your emergency management?
Well, it's not complete oversight. What they do is they review the things that we're doing and they help with the documents we put together, they give us formats and they also give us samples and work with our Emergency Management Team. Naxx, they're based out of Florida.
Florida.
Right. But they do it all over the country.
Where does their money come from?
It's through their own funding that they get, through the federal government, state governments. It doesn't come from us.
Do they have any oversight vis a vis telling you what you must do?
No.
Thank you.
And do you have a plan right now?
Yes.
Do you have a plan in place? And this would be a plan for what, counterterrorism? Is that what you're talking about?
Well, deals with counterterrorism and that's part of it, yes.
I notice when I drive around New Milford especially, I see signs that say blue route, red route. Can you, do you know what that's about?
Yeah, that's about detours for traffic.
For traffic for what reason?
Well, depending on the size of loads, they have different detours based on construction that's going on.
So that's only for oversized loads?
Yes.
Not just for the general public?
Right.
It's not like a escape route?
No.
In case there's an emergency?
No.
It's just for oversized loads?
Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item twenty-four.
I make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-sixteen dash zero-six for cleaning Pennsylvania's streams and rivers.
I second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, seconded by Christian Arnold to approve item twenty-four to adopt resolution twenty-sixteen oh-six cleaning Pennsylvania's streams and rivers. Questions or comments?
Can you read it? Can you explain it? Like what are you trying to accomplish?
Do you have any question? Do you know it, do you mind or no?
It has to do with growing greater monies and enhancing quality of life in the Commonwealth. Growing greater monies are used for concrete barnyards, spring developments, things like that, that keeps sediment out of the streams and more, things like that, that affect the quality of the streams. And there's such a focus on the Chesapeake Bay now that that's why they're implementing this.
So this resolution, when we're talking about the incinerator that's possibly coming in, would this resolution help the community to keep the streams and rivers clean?
Well, there'd be stuff that would go through the Conservation District and depending on what streams and what condition the streams are and what's going on, it could be a part of it.
Okay, so it would prevent anyone from putting anything additionally into the streams?
No, it does not do that.
This is just cleaning what's currently there?
This takes care of and is mostly set toward, you know, the farmlands, taking care of the manure pastures, making sure the manure is not getting into the streams and those things.
Okay.
And I think they also use that for some of the, they use that money also for cleaning out some of the streams, the debris and from the last flood and stuff.
Okay, so it's basically cleaning, it's not preventing anything else additionally going into it?
Right.
And if you had an industry that was then adding additional things into the stream, would this cover that?
Yes.
Is there something to stop them doing this?
This is a funding stream to help to fund things, to improve the streams and improve the barnyards and the fields. It's not an ordinance to stop or to do anything else.
Got it.
Excuse me, where are the, where can we obtain copies of that resolution, the complete resolution?
You can get it from the Deputy Chief Clerk's office. All in favor?
Aye.
Item twenty-five, we received no bids, so that'll die from lack of bids.
And what is, again, where's the, what's the bridge deck project again?
There are bridges that the decks need to get resurfaced on, part of the maintenance with the bridges that we have.
Those thirty-two bridges?
Yes.
And all thirty-two bridges, do they need maintenance at this time?
Well, not at this time. There's so many each year that we try to do and based on, you know, what's wrong with them, based determines how much we're going to do.
Because there's one now that's looking pretty bad near me, Silver Lake Township on Laurel Lake Road. Is that one of your bridges?
I couldn't tell you.
How do I find out if it's on the list? Like where's the list?
Well, you could first of all search the PennDOT's website and it'll tell you if it's one of PennDOT's bridges. And you can give us the information, we can try and locate it and see what it is.
So give it to your office?
Yeah.
Do you know off the top of your head what these four bridges, where these four bridges are?
Not off the top of my head.
Okay.
I can, if you want that information, I can get it for you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comment? Motion to hear?
Well, there's a public comment, wait a second, people don't understand. Are you asking for public comment right now?
That's just what I said twice. It's a public comment.
It sort of slipped through, okay. Anybody have public comments?
Bruce heard it real well, did you Bruce?
Well, because I usually have comments, but...
Is this the commissioner's meeting?
Anybody have any comments before I comment? Okay, we got a comment here. Being in the real estate business, I'm getting a lot of calls from businesses coming into, wanting to come into the area. And the first question they ask is our Chamber of Commerce. They want to know who they can talk to, they want to know if they have demographics, they want to know, you know, things about the county. And of course, we don't have one that's full-time, we have one that's volunteer, which has done very well, by the way, the last five years. But, you know, more and more every day, we need this. They look at us like we don't exist, we don't have these things for, you know, I had one for Best Buy, you know, they just wouldn't even talk to us because we don't have one. So anybody can talk about this and get something established or a grant or something to get a, or an internship that we can get from?
Well, we've been talking to members of the Chamber of Commerce about the Chamber of Commerce itself and the structure of it. You know, part of the problem we have is it's a Montrose Chamber of Commerce and that's the only area that they have been servicing is just Montrose.
And I belong to, which we're trying to do since we're in our county.
So we're trying to take and get that to move out to a Suskinda County. And of course, names are always the things that, you know, people get worked up about, whether it should be called the Suskinda County Chamber of Commerce, it should be called the Great Northeast Chamber of Commerce. So that's something, you know, that's the first step is trying to pull the whole organization together and bring that in. So hopefully, we can continue conversations with the chamber and keep moving forward. You know, a Chamber of Commerce is an excellent thing and if we can continue to get that organization to grow and to expand, more information can go through there and we can look at trying to do better things with it. And, you know, down the road, there's always opportunities to do things like that, yes.
I don't really think, I mean, I think that that stuff is available through the Progress Authority. You think that is demographics? I mean, I think you should keep that number, we pay them on an annual basis to do that for us.
Yeah, and I have the disk, we made it the whole, and I send that on to the businesses, but then they still want to, you know, what chamber do you have? Who can I talk to about certain things? And they have talked to the Progress Authority, but some of the things are too individual about the county that they don't need to.
Stacy, you have a question?
No, I was just going to mention that Economic Development was looking at their, was still compiling their site development, available site list, so...
Right.
Could the commissioners give us an update if there's any, been any further information on the proposed incinerator for New Milford Township?
Well, the only thing I can tell you is most of the information I've been getting is off the website from the, that somebody put up about stopping the incinerator. But we do have more information. One of the township supervisors did get a contact at Tyler Corners and got some information and apparently the same information was put out yesterday, I believe Tyler Corners, from my understanding, put out a webpage yesterday, I think it's Tylercorners.com or Tylercornerspartners.com or something like that. Tylercorners.com, I'm sorry. They put out a website yesterday, put some information on that. So I did have a reporter call me last night and ask me about it from the Times and of course, my response was, well, you know, it's nice that they're putting information out, but it's a day late and a dollar short. They should have put this out in October when they were making deals with the property owner instead of getting out now. But I don't think it gives much detail, but Vera did tell me earlier today that it does give you a spot on there that you can ask questions or make a response to, so I would encourage everybody to do that, to find out as much information as you can. But that's all the information that we have too.
Now, it's come to my attention that you and Bob Templeton met with this group back in April?
That's correct.
On April eighth for a luncheon?
Yes.
And we've been getting a lot of, from our elected officials, pleading ignorance on what this is all about and what's going to be developed. Can you enlighten us at all on what that meeting was about and what you learned?
Sure. And unfortunately, we're at previous meetings, yes. They called me the night before and said that a group was coming in, the salesman for the, and the property owner for the property called and said, you know, hey, we're going to have a quick meet, can you stop down? I didn't even know that Bob Templeton had been invited. That was a shock to me when I got there. Went in and yeah, there was a bunch of people there and they said, you know, hey, we're looking to come to the area to do some business development, we're looking at, you know, possibly do an industrial park. And, you know, we asked, you know, what kind of businesses you're in? And they said, well, we're just developers, but one of the things we are looking at is, you know, the possibility of doing something with industrial incineration. At that point, we told them strictly at that point, well, you need to contact the township supervisors, have a meeting with the township, have a meeting with the people so everybody knows what's going on, so they know what you're trying to do. And that was the last we heard of them.
The last New Milford Township meeting last week, the supervisors pretty much indicated that they weren't aware of anything they could do at that level. It seems to be going back and forth between the supervisors and the county commissioners, both claiming that neither party has any ability to do anything regarding this.
Well, I think, I do know from the township supervisors that, you know, they were given an ordinance and they are reviewing it and checking with their solicitor to see, you know, what they should be doing and they should be doing and so I know they're checking on that now.
Is it true that the county, that only the individual townships can pass an air quality ordinance or could the county as a whole also?
Well, there's already air quality ordinances and then those are done through DEP and EDG.
Yes, I know that, that's the state, but I'm talking about the county, the county itself, Suskinda County.
Right. The county, you know, at this point, we don't, we haven't enacted any local ordinances because first of all, we don't have an ordinance department. Second of all, a lot of the communities have their own planning and subdivisions and their own ordinances. And there is actually, there was five other communities that were here two weeks ago that were looking to do the same thing. Any other questions? Yes.
At the township meeting, well, they had the first day, the church meeting and then the township meeting. And at the church meeting, you had said it was up to the township supervisors. At the township meeting, the supervisors, I'm wondering why this was brought to county levels information in April and the township supervisors were not really aware of it until just recently? Because they are working very well with the community and they are trying to do everything they can. The title was supposed to be cleared by the twenty-fifth of this month. Now, the township is only working on this the last couple of weeks. Why, why did the county commissioners know about this in April? And it take this long for the community or the township to be aware of this? I mean, it's almost like we're running behind the eight ball and we should have, we should have had the, we should have known ahead of time that there was some type of industry coming in that was going to hurt our environment. Why did the county know and not the township?
Well, first of all, the county didn't know. And as I said in that meeting, and especially at the church meeting, is that, you know, we get a lot of people that call and say, hey, you know, we're thinking about possibly coming to Suskinda County. And we say to everybody, the first thing you need to do is go to the municipalities and have meetings and let people know what's going on if you're really going to come here. Now, a lot of people come and they don't, they don't come to the area. And actually, I've had a call a month ago from an organization called and said, we'd like to have a meeting with the commissioners and talk about project and, but we want you to sign confidentiality and nondisclosures. And I said, absolutely not. You know, if you tell me, we tell everybody. That's how it works. We tell everybody everything we know when we know it. And as far as the information on this project, when this started back in October and it wasn't, we didn't even know about these people in October, we had a meeting with the landowner and the salesman and we were talking about their site as a possible business park and we were informed at that point that they had already had somebody in mind and were working a deal, but weren't disclosed to us as to who it was or what was going on. And it wasn't until April that this group came in, but at this meeting in April, these people weren't, didn't commit to anything and didn't say they were actually going to do anything. They just said they were just looking at the options and didn't say anything about it. So as we got the information then, that's when we started putting it out in our planning committees, started putting it out in the economic development to get the information out, it's, okay, we've heard this, we don't know if it's coming, it's not coming, whether it's true, whether it's not true, and try to get as much information as possible. And I got another guy that called yesterday and left me a message and said, you know, listen, I want to talk to you about a business venture in Suskinda County. Well, at this point, listen, as much as I'm getting flack over this, I'm hesitant to even take this phone call now. I'm better off not knowing anything than trying to get the message out to people and saying, hey, something's going on.
Is there any type of committee in the county level that could possibly, I'm just wondering, does the, is there any kind of committee that would know what the community is looking for? I mean, are there people who are planning like this is, this is the type of industry we're looking for, this is not the type of industry? And to put some type of safeguards in place that these industries don't sneak in behind our backs before it's too late and then all of a sudden, we're like, oh, look at that beautiful smokestack that's going up? Is there some type of planning commission that does that or?
Well, there's a planning, Christian, but what you're asking for and what you're, and what you're indicating is, is that you want to be able to, you know, you can have your, your townships, your municipalities have zoning and create zoning areas and create, you know, residential, commercial and industrial and they can, and they can pass certain ordinances. But you have to be extremely careful, you can't discriminate against an industry and say, well, we don't want you. You know, and that's one of the things that you have to be careful of when you're making these safeguards and putting these ordinances in, is that you don't get in a discrimination lawsuit that will bankrupt your municipality.
Unless they're a polluter, if they're a polluter, can't we exclude them?
If they comply with the laws, you know, then you can't discriminate. That's what I'm trying to tell you. Now, you know, we're hoping that, you know, on this, as more information comes out, you know, this website's a great thing right now. They put this website out, I encourage everybody to go to that website now and start bombarding it with your questions, your comments and your concerns to try and get that information back to them and see what we can stir from that to get more information. Because we're not, the only way we're getting information is by the grassroots group and you people continue to take and ask more questions and demand more answers, that's the only way this stuff is starting to come out. And listen, I call people all day a lot, people do not tell us anything at the county level. And, you know, there's many reasons for that. First of all, they don't want to get assessed, they don't want to get taxed and all kinds First of all, they don't want to get assessed, they don't want to get taxed and all kinds of other issues. But, you know, if they, if they are doing something, they shouldn't be there. They're not going to come to us and say, hey, we're trying to do something that you're not going to like.
Yeah.
You know, our goal has been and always will be, one of the things we started five years ago was people in Susquehanna County said, listen, we need more jobs for our kids that are graduating from high school. We need good quality jobs. And that has always been our goal. And it started for us back in 2014 or 2013 when we got a grant for $20,000 to do a business park study. Because that was one of the concerns we set was, you know, we don't want to take and, and try to develop things where things shouldn't be developed. So, one of the issues was, you know, we don't want to try and put a business park in the center of town. You know, people don't want the truck traffic and all those issues and a factory and all the car traffic. So, where could we basically put an industrial park on the 81 corridor that would take in and work? Well, unfortunately, you know, some of the exits just are not conducive to anything. The exit at Great Bend is all flood zone. So, you can't build anything there even if you wanted to. Other exits, you know, it's too hilly, too, too much valley, you can't do anything there. One of the exits that came out of the study was the Gibson exit because of the development. But we knew we had a problem at the Gibson exit because of the sewer system there and the lack of the infrastructure. The sewer system that's in Gibson right now is already maxed out. That's part of the reason why Lackawanna College can't take and build dorms there is because there's no septic system to, sewer system to maintain it. So, we kind of, kind of looked like everything was dead. You know, there's no way to take and put an industrial park in on that corridor because there's no infrastructure there to do anything. And nobody's going to come in and, you know, pay the expense of putting a, you know, sewage treatment plan in and electrical systems in and all that other stuff to take and do this. So, it was kind of a dead end for all of us. And that's why, you know, we kind of stopped focusing on that business park. And we started focusing more on, you know, we had to get fresh water to the jail because we have a problem with water at the jail. So, we started focusing more on that. And then, of course, you know, things popped up for South Montrose. But my understanding now is that project's gone, so that's just undeveloped land again down there. But we still are working on getting water to the jail. So, that's kind of how this progressed. And like I said, it was October, I believe it was October, when we did meet with the property owner and the salesman for that property that was working for the property owner. And, and said, you know, what are your intentions with that land? Because we knew that the, the property owner was a person that was buying up land and turning around and keeping the gas rates and selling it off. And so, you know, we were a little concerned at that time. And they said, well, you know, if the county wants to buy it, you can buy it for three, four million dollars. And we said, well, absolutely not, that's crazy. Or we have somebody else that's interested and now we can't disclose who it is. And so, then it wasn't until April when they came back that we found out that it was this Tyler group. And as far as to who they all are, I still don't know who all the members of this Tyler group are and what's going on. I mean, I've heard bits and pieces, I heard some comments at the last meeting as to, you know, another gentleman that's apparently part of it. But I still don't have a list of who they are.
Well, then who did you meet with? Did you know the names? They give names or were they?
I walked in a room that had 20 people into it and people say, do I remember all their names?
Wait a second. Tyler, you mean 20 people were there besides you and Bob?
I don't know who all the people were.
You mean 18 were from Tyler group?
I do not know who.
Do you know one name, even one?
I knew there was a Bob and a Tim and that was all I.
A Bob and a Tim from the Tyler group.
Right. Now, this is April. So, again, I meet lots of people every day. I don't write their names down.
Did anybody else come with you and Bob to possibly take notes, get, take names?
No, no.
Just you and Bob?
I didn't even know Bob was going to be there.
Okay, so it's just you by yourself? You didn't bring anybody else?
Well, if I knew what it was, I would've brought the other two commissioners. But I didn't know anything about it, like I said, so maybe just call them.
Normally, when people meet with people, they give cards. Didn't they give you any cards, business cards?
No.
So, what kind of a group is this? Does that sound, seem suspicious to you?
I am telling you everything I know.
What kind of people are these? They don't even give cards.
Anybody else got any questions?
Yes, I would. Go ahead, let her talk.
Patty, go ahead.
We just got a word, totally different topic. $5 million for the impact fee for Susquehanna County. Do you know what the total impact that was from the gas to the state?
Oh, it's, I mean, it's over 820 million total so far. I would imagine they've got to be, they've got to be, you know, over a billion dollars.
Out of this 5 million though?
Oh, no, out of this 5 million. A total of over probably a billion dollars has gone to the state and the state distributes. So, out of that, 5 million is for the county. And then there's another like, I can't remember. I haven't looked at the numbers yet, but I think it's probably another.
I think it's close to 6 million for the municipalities.
6 million for the municipalities.
So, do we know what percentage Susquehanna gets according to all the other, like Pittsburgh and everything? What percentage?
I think we ranked number one this year.
So, we get?
Two.
Two?
Well, Stacy, the reporter, she's on it, so.
Washington County was number one.
Washington County was number one.
How does it compare to the last check? If it's 5 million to the county this time?
About a million dollars less.
1 million less?
Yeah. And next year's, I expect to be probably 2 or 3 million dollars less.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah, well, actually, I'd like to add something. There's a state municipal code that create, that controls what counties and townships can do as far as planning. In order to plan, you have to have a comprehensive plan with township. And then you can go from there to zoning. The state law requires a township to allow every legal use in, in planning and in zoning. So, it's a rather involved complex from an ordinance standpoint. And the, both the county and the townships are bound by this municipal code. I don't know offhand, 501?
501.
So, that there's a process to go through. You can't just tell someone they can't do it in your township. You have to allow it. But what you can do through planning is you can control it. And you can put things where you want it and you can limit it. And, but it requires action before the fact, not after the fact.
Okay.
And there's been, you know, quite a pushback in the county in general to planning. Now, you can get around the, I shouldn't say get around, but you can satisfy the use position by township by doing regional planning or approve the townships come together and decide that, you know, the, this commercial operation will go in this township because it's best suited. It won't be allowed anywhere else within the region. This was attempted a few years ago, but there was a lot of pushback and nothing was done.
Right. Exactly. And actually, there was five communities that were, that met with us two weeks ago, I think it was, that are working on, they have their comprehensive plans, they're working on their zoning and they're getting ready to present it back. Actually, I needed our GIS maps, which we gave to them without a problem. And they're working on, working with their municipalities to do that. Previous to that, there was the Northern Tier Coalition. That was a group of municipalities that were looking at it. But they got to the point where they didn't like the idea of the zoning and, and the planning. So, they backed away from it and decided not to do it. And even, and this is many years ago, before the township supervisors that are in New Milford now, but many, many, many years ago, there was, I believe it was Great Bend Township, Great Bend Borough, Halsted Borough, New Milford Township. And New Milford were all at the same time. And I mean, we're talking probably 10 or 15 years ago, I think, or even longer than that. They were looking at trying to do something and it just didn't get enough traction to go anyplace. And I think New Milford Borough is one that does have some zoning now, so.
Any other townships with zoning and a comprehensive plan in our county?
Yeah, there's like seven or eight of them. You can check with Bob Templeton, he'll give you the list.
And there's all, and they're all different, the planning, the zoning that they have?
Well, they do what's right, they do what's right, what they feel is right for their people.
Okay.
The ordinances are written by the township, usually through a consultant or based on some of our townships. And I'm only speaking from experience. I'm, I spent 16 years on the planning commission in Euclid Township in Chester County. We were a township with over 20,000 residents. And it's at, sits at the interchange on the Pennsylvania Turnpike. Just, just, just west of the King and Prussia interchange. And, you know, so like I'm speaking from that, this was seven years ago before I moved up here.
So, you live in here now. What township were you in?
Yeah, I'm a resident in Milford Township.
Oh, you are.
For the last 14 years, full-time. I've owned up here and vacationed up here since 1991.
All right, Stacy.
Just for clarification purposes, I think we need to, you know, clarify that the county's planning commission does not regulate zoning or usage. It's, they're simply tied to setbacks and like the actual land development, not the use of the land.
Right. And to kind of echo or to give you additional information, the county commissioners are not out trying to entice those types of businesses or businesses that are environmentally unfriendly into this area. You know, we are trying to keep our head up high enough to see what's going on with New York State and businesses leaving there and other areas and trying to capitalize on some, some good businesses. You know, Dick's Sporting Goods was looking for, to put a distribution center in, a warehouse and a picking station. And that was the business that we were targeting to try and get into our area. Unfortunately, we are either going to lose out to Conklin or we're going to lose out to Dunmore because Dunmore was able to get a sweet deal from the state to offer to Dick's to go into a facility down there. And that's part of the struggle we have. Although our intention is trying to bring jobs, the problem we have is, you know, the state sometimes forgets there's anything above Interstate 80. And it's hard to get businesses here when you don't have the incentives that they'll offer for, you know, the lower part of the state. And so, that's, yes, Bruce.
Do you have any, any idea at all how many jobs this incinerator may produce?
You know, I would only be guessing, but I, if I remember, I hear they were talking like a number of 100 or something like that or 150, that's.
Full-time jobs?
That's, that's kind of what I heard. And I don't know if they're all full-time or not, but they, they mentioned about 100. I think it was about 100 or 150.
Okay, so they don't even have the courtesy to tell you who they are, but they said 100 some odd jobs. So, let's make that a more realistic number, 50, 60 full-time jobs. And according to what was mentioned at the last meeting by a Montrose Borough council person, that there are studies that show that these incinerators produce cancer clusters everywhere they've been put up. May I make a suggestion to the, to the commissioners or whoever might do this within the framework of the courthouse? To follow that, that thread and see what the result, what the results were of having these incinerators in other areas of the country where people did get cancer, where they weren't clustered around those incinerators. And I think if people started finding out that we were just a dumping ground because we couldn't get some other business, we allowed a, a death camp to be put up for 50, 60 jobs. I think you get the news, Susquehanna County. You make, you make the news as, hey, you want to do something, get rich? Don't care what, what happens? This is the place to go.
Yeah, just for my own clarification, the Tyler Corners group is in the development business, correct? They want to develop an industrial park. They are not in the incinerator business. They don't build incinerators around the world.
I can't answer that.
Okay.
Because I don't know at this point because nobody's told me exactly what they are. I have to read the information which I just got, which come off their website. I haven't read it yet.
Okay, I read it. I read it last night.
I know what they said at the, at the meeting, that they're, they're an investment group that invests and tries to create the business park. So, you know, whether there's more to that or not, I'm hoping to find out when I read this today.
Okay, thank you.
One more comment and then I'll stop. Considering we all live in this community, we all have families in this community, none of us want to see anything that's going to come in to harm the community. And commissioners, you guys too. I mean, you live here, you want what's best for the community. So, working together, instead of pointing blame and saying, we can't do anything, it's township, the township's saying it's somebody else, working together. What you're saying is the best strategy as township members is just put the word out and say that we, that we need to do something? I mean, is there anything that we can do collaboratively? Or where do we go from here? What's our next step? What's our best, what's our best strategy to stop this from coming in? I don't want to argue like who's responsible for what. I want to know what the solution is. And, and as a township member, living in the community, you know, third generation, my sons live here, my sons own businesses, I want my grandchildren to be here. What do we do? What's the best strategy looking forward from this point on for everyone in this room so that this does not happen?
I can, what you want to, pardon me, our voice, your voice, your neighbor's voice, your, your townships. You've got to get everybody together. Invite them to come, but they can't make a decision who comes and does it. All of us living in the township and them as residents. But they can't say, you can't come, we want to stop you. But us here in the room can stop. You have got to get people behind you. Am I correct? I have to get voices, everybody.
Organize and numbers and stay involved.
Stay involved.
I have been at so many first meetings where everybody came out. I mean, we had to move meetings to a high school gymnasium in order to accommodate everybody. And before the hearings for a major project were done, there were eight or 10 people. We went back to the township building because everybody lost interest. Because, yes, listening to engineers and attorneys is boring and your basketball game is more important. Well, it's not.
And you get environmental groups that are against this that comes to your meeting and will push and push and push. And if this is something that isn't good, and I'm not sure if it is or isn't, but these companies will come and then all this Tyler group will not want to fight against all of them.
And I think what this gentleman said too, you know, you can't show up at a meeting with 100 people or 50 people or 15 people, even a small one like this. And it's education. We have to get it in the local paper, we have to start talking about it, we have to get it out there. Because if we showed up to a meeting in each county or township with 100 people, you're talking a thousand people and walking into a room, that's what we need to do. We need to start showing that we're, we're together here, we really don't want this. I think that's, you know, we have to do this, we have to get it out there.
And for me, it's a question of whether I ever answer my phone. If somebody's called to say, I want to come to the area.
Ask me if they're going to put up a polluting industry.
Yeah, but just, do you admit pollution? Give them a little?
Thanks. Thank you. He says they're not going to tell you.
If they're not going to tell you, someone before brought up the point that, that we don't know what, what's coming in there. That's the whole problem.
Right.
If it walks like a duck and quacks like a duck and puts poison in the air.
That's why they were told from the beginning, Bruce, told from the beginning to take and have a public meeting, come to the public, come to the township supervisors, let them know what's going on, you know. And so, that's the thing you should be banging away on their website. You know, we don't want to wait 60 to 90 days. I heard that's one of the things that came out, 60 to 90 days before they come meet with people and let us know. Come meet with us next week, tell us what you do know. You may not have a, if you don't have a fully developed plan of what you're going to do, that's okay. Give us at least a couple of chapters out of the novel to let us know what's going on. You know, that to me would be transparency.
It was said that cancer-causing, these are, emit cancer-causing chemicals. I don't know if it's something you want to pursue is, in ordinances, is to limit exposure to cancer-causing chemicals. Put that in a, in a ordinance.
You got to be careful because the ground's full of radon gas. And you want to know how many houses around here have radon in it?
Oh, they do.
Absolutely.
They do.
So, again, again, you know, the problem is, is, and what you've got to understand is, and this is why zoning fails in areas. Because when you pass an ordinance or you pass a rule, it has two effects. It does what you want it to do, but then it also affects the other people and what they want to do. So, if you, if you put in a, an ordinance that says, no stacks can have any emissions, period. Now, what are you going to do with Blue Ridge School, Mountain View School? What are you going to do with all these people that got wood burning stoves? What are you going to do with all that stuff? So, it's not just so cut and dry that you can say, gee, just put this in and this will take care of it. This takes a lot of work on the solicitors, the attorneys and people to research and try and figure out a way where they can do something without causing even more harm to the communities and to the community people.
To that point, is the, is the county solicitor involved in looking at options as to how the county can be, become involved, more involved in this process?
I know the county solicitor is having conversations now with the planning commission director and having discussions.
So, the commissioners are being proactive?
We're trying, well, we're as proactive as we can. As we know things, as somebody puts something up on their website, so we can find out, then we become proactive.
There's not much to look at.
Right.
But you need to continue to be proactive.
Well, exactly. We need to be looking at EPA.
And as best you can and plan for.
And we need to be looking at EPA and DEP and making sure that, you know, if something does happen that they, you know, come in here and at least do their baseline testing and making sure all that's done so it can be monitored. So, we try and protect us the best we can.
Could I just comment about what I think you do have on your side is a rebirth, a reorganization? Could I just comment about what I think you do have on your side is a rebirth, a reorganization of rescue that kept the low radioactivity landfill out of air rat, and those people are getting very involved in this. And I don't, I don't remember everybody's names, but they're on your side, so.
Do you remember one name?
Sandy Babuca.
Sandy Babuca's getting a.
Paul Ferrero.
Sandy's in Alaska now.
She's in Alaska right now, yeah. And Hugh Combs, maybe Hugh Combs?
Yeah, I think he's one of them.
Joyce Stone.
Joyce Stone is getting interested?
Well, she was part of that rescue group. She was part of the rescue group.
Oh, wait, I wanted to ask also, you know, when I looked up incinerators, trash incinerators, now it's, all of them emit toxins. All of them emit NOX, lead, dioxins, particulate matter. So none of them, there's no technology out there that eliminates that unless you can find it. So I'm gonna ask you, and maybe, since you've mentioned this in the past, is there any technology out there that can actually show incinerators operating right now that are not emitting any of these toxins to a community? So if you can find it, let us know. I couldn't find it, so.
Any other questions?
I have a comment. I think that basically, people are frustrated because they're, they're not hearing what they need to hear, and information's not flowing both ways. And I think that, this lady made, I think, the best argument. Education is, is, is knowledge is power. So, instead of spinning your wheels, you've got the power of the pen. Letters to the editor, calls to local radio stations. In, in Biggerton, there's a jerk out there. He'll take the phone call from anybody, and he'll put anybody on. Get on the phone. And the more awareness you generate, I mean, there are newspapers that will not publish your, your, your letter if it goes over a certain amount of words, but there are others that will publish as many. And there are many newspapers. Use them. And go into Tuncanic, go into all areas around, surrounding. It alerts people. Because if it's not you that it's happening to, sooner or later, it's gonna be them, and they're concerned. And so awareness is your best defense, and you have it, it's free. It just takes a little bit of ink, and if you have a computer, you're gonna just email it over to the letter to the editor, and it gets published. And you've got a lot of them. Make use of it. Awareness is the most important thing you can do.
Exactly. And it's about getting the message out, and that's one thing that, as we get information, we put it out as fast as we get it. Unfortunately, I'm getting more information off the website that, that was put up than I am from anyplace else. But as I do get stuff, like yesterday, when the newspaper reporter or the Times Tribune called me and asked me and said, hey, this is up, what's your comments? And so I gave him the comments. I said, listen, you know, this is a day late and a dollar short. They should have done this, you know, six months ago, you know, and they still need to come out now. They're not ninety days from now. So, so that was, you know, I gave that information to the reporter. And, you know, two weeks ago, when Jim Hamill showed up in my backyard, when I took two hours off and wanted to ask me questions, you know, I, I took my time there and gave him some more information, and, you know, tried to point him in some more directions to get more information.
And he's a, he's a channel, what, sixteen or twelve?
He's sixteen.
Channel sixteen.
So, so again, you know, listen, I'm gonna call this guy that called me two days ago and said, hey, I want to talk to you about a business venture. Find out what that's about, and I'm gonna let the public know, and hopefully, you know, the, the public won't kill the messenger. I'm just trying to get the information.
One more comment, regarding DEP and EPA applications, is there any, any way is, how's the county involved in being, is there a function to have the note, the county notified automatically?
Well, the municipalities and the county, as well as the state, will get notified. So when someone goes on this magnitude, just like with the, you know, water withdrawal or anything else, when they go to do that, there'll be a document sent out from DEP that'll go to the state, it'll go to the county, it'll go to the municipality, saying, you know, this person came in and has applied for this permit. And then there's a, you know, a period of time there that that sets and allows for comments back to DEP.
I understand the process.
So once that information comes, if it ever does come, you know, we'll get that information out too, saying, listen, we just got this notice.
Okay. Would that be something that would be on the agenda for the commissioners' meeting?
No, you know, it's not an agenda item as far as going on the agenda.
How would we know, how, how would the county inform us as residents that this application was filed? That's, that's basically the bottom line.
No, that's one thing that we're gonna have to look at. There's a lot of applications get filed for all kinds of various things, you know, and maybe we can look at going onto our website and put those on as they come in, so people know, know what applications are coming in. And so we'll check into that and see what we can do.
Okay, because I think that would be important.
I mean, there's a lot of, we get them for, you know, listen, we're shutting the bridge down, we're gonna do this, here's this. And I mean, there's a lot of them, but, you know, let me take, let's take a look at that as, as a group and see what we can do to try and get something on the website so people can go to it and see what it is.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be a good idea, because if you sell a house in this area, your name gets in the newspaper. But, you know, a business wants to come in, and thinking about purchasing, there's not mention of it anywhere. So, you know, that's two sides to flip the coin there too, so.
Well, the difference is, is if you, if you buy a house here, there's a legal transaction that takes place and it has to happen. If you're a business, if you're coming into an already, you know, if you're already coming into a pre-existing building, you know, there's not much notification at all.
Yeah, but there's no building there, is there?
No, but that's the advantage. That's why this is, you know, thank God that there isn't, because you probably wouldn't have known about it at all if there was a building there. You know, so, so be thankful there is no building there. That's how everybody's found out what's going on. You know, now, you know, I realize, you know, the property owner and the, and the, and the real estate salesman's gonna make a nice chunk of change off this, but, you know, that's the only way we, we're gonna find out is when, you know, that changes hands.
And there's still a lot of questions up in the air. It's just that, like, you know, she said, and other people said, you live here, you're born here, your grandparents are here. You don't want to be in ten years from now, you know, people are dropping dead from cancer. You can't eat the vegetables you're growing. You can't eat the cows that you're having, the fields, the chicken eggs. That's something, you know, you want to protect the future of your children, your grandchildren, and whatever, you know. You don't want to be able to go outside now and put a mask on because you're afraid of the particles flying in the air. And they say that, that stuff can spread thirty-five, forty mile radius, and that's huge.
Well, actually, actually, I think that, you know, when you start talking about, you know, air contamination, I mean, you've got to look at what comes from, you know, across the country over, over to this site. I mean, we've had, you know, how many times have we had acid rain problems with our vehicles because of what was in the air? I mean, you know, there's places on the planet right now that have active volcanoes going that are putting so much sulfur dioxide in the air that, you know, everything is dead for thousands of miles around it. So, you know, depending on the airstream, depending on how it's moving, depending on what's going on.
It could go up a hundreds of miles, yeah, I understand. But if you're only a quarter of a mile away, or five miles away, we're gonna get hit here, so.
So, yeah, but I would again urge everybody to go, if they've got this website on, allows you to ask questions and make comments, is to go on there and tell everybody you know to go on there and ask them questions, and ask them to come have a meeting next week.
And I, I put a comment yesterday morning. I still have not heard back from them. So just to let you know, they're not responding quickly on their new website that just went up. So I'd like to also let people know that they can go to the authority, progress authority meetings, which are once a month, and they discuss businesses that are coming in. Because didn't they know about the Tyler Corners Group?
That's where, it was first released at the, about the same time it was released between the planning commission and the progress authority.
Which was what, March or April of this year? April of this year was released. So if you want to know more about businesses, go, it's public, once a month. It's here in Montrose. They meet, Tony Ventello is the director, and you can hear what people are considering, what, who, who's coming forward. And I also wanted to ask, did you go to the Chamber of Commerce meeting last Friday? Did any of you three go to the Chamber of Commerce meeting? It was public.
To the luncheon that they had, the legislators? Yeah, I was there.
You were there, and you were there too, Betsy? Can you tell us, those of us who were not there, what, what were the main points from the legislators that might be helpful for us or that were, that is worthwhile? Any comments from them, or anything that happened?
No, but you can reach out to legislators if you want, talk to them. They'll be more glad to give you an update.
And can we do a baseline health study? Because like you say, what's, what's the health in this area?
I already answered that question as to what we're looking at there. Any other questions or comments? Yes.
I was involved with the Northern Tier Coalition, which consisted of twelve municipalities, everything north and east of Montrose.
Is that back when your hair was black?
Yeah, yeah, and not falling out. And we spent three years working on that. Had, I don't know how many public meetings. I think the biggest turnout we got at any of those public meetings was three people from the public. Quite a few of them, we had zero. After three years, when we finally got to where we were making some progress, all of a sudden, people said, zoning, and panicked, and killed it. And that's the problem in this county. Everybody gets upset with something like an incinerator. If it doesn't happen and goes away, then it'll all be forgotten, and five years from now, when something else of this sort comes up, then they'll get excited again. You've got to plan ahead. You don't wait till it happens. It's too late then. And zoning can't cure anything. You wouldn't stop anything like this, but at least you could regulate where it is.
You can control it. You can, you can discourage it through zoning.
Right. And zoning takes a lot of time, doesn't it? It doesn't just happen overnight?
No, no. It's, it, it takes planning. It takes, you have to have a comprehensive plan, or they set out by the state that you have to do it. It should have been done years ago. If you want to, if you want to control it, the only plan that you can control is your own, regardless.
So you can control, like, where it can be? Is that what you're saying? You can control where it can be placed?
Yes. And you can put, you, you can put limits on it. You can, but you can't, you can't deny it. You can't deny it. All the state says, and I, I don't know, it's been many, many years since I've looked at the municipal code. But the, all you have to do is provide for reuse. You can provide for use in such a place that no business is gonna want to put their use there.
So how would you do that?
Through zoning. You, you, all you need is one place in the township where you can put, you know, for, for instance, you could zone for a, a strip club next to the municipal sewage authority. Or, you know, there's, there are things that you can do within, within the ordinance, but you have to have an ordinance. You can't do it without a comprehensive plan.
So then would you suggest that we do that? Would you suggest we do that, start working on that?
I think it's something that every community should have. You should plan for growth in the future. Unfortunately, I think, in this case, you're probably too late.
Listen, I want to thank everybody for coming today. This is.
Thank you.
You know, it was, it was a good meeting. I appreciate everybody coming. It's nice to see, you know, so many people come out. I wish it wasn't for something controversial. I wish it was just because you wanted to come to the meeting. But I understand that, commissioners understand that, so we thank all of you for coming today.
I just want to make a comment about something that was asked last meeting two weeks ago regarding projects in Sosa Hina County. I made a comment regarding two agencies in the county perhaps not working well together. Well, the agencies are working well together after getting the facts, and it's just disappointing that people go to organizations and don't necessarily get all the facts, and then come to take someone's livelihood away. So I just want to say, things in the county are going well with organizations and agencies. The other thing is, the farmer's market will be opening on the green on Thursday, the thirtieth of June, two to six, I guess every Thursday.
Three to seven, I thought it was. Three to seven, and it's, I thought it was behind the buildings. Now it's on the green?
No, they're doing, it's supposed to be doing both. They're supposed to be up here for a little bit, then they go down to the hunt thing, isn't it? How it was supposed to work, or something like that?
Yeah, I guess I remember. Maybe it was more than that.
Well, I don't know. I don't know. I just remember.
From what I understand.
I guess we'll find out Thursday.
I got one of them last night.
The market will be on the green. I thought from three, I had the hours as three to seven, perhaps. I'm wrong. And then, of course, then Joyce's has like the Thursday night live thing and barbecue and using.
I got an email from the market manager, whenever she's called.
But it's keeping the vendors and, and people out of the parking lot where.
Right.
Yes.
Hey, can I have a mushroom and a drink?
So moved.
All favor?
It's page two. It's page two.
Thank you all again for coming.
Oh, all right, okay. Well, I got an email last night, though.